November 20th, meeting of the Eastham Select Board. We'll start with public and select board information. Does any of the select board have anything they'd like to talk about?
Turn up for a fun day at the library was wonderful. I had a great time. It seemed like a lot of people went through. They set up little stations. And there was way more going on there than I had initially thought there was going to be. And yeah, I saw lots of kids and I got a temporary tattoo. And then I got some turnip-related food around and a great picture next to a really big turnip that I still don't know how much it weighs. So, thank you to the library for hosting and for all of the work that goes into organizing it. And to everyone who came out, there was even a couple that just like goes around to like little funny, like small-town festivals. And the woman was like dressed up in a turnip and she had little turnip baubles on her headband. It was great.
I missed her.
Yep.
All right. Jerry?
Two things. One, I want to commend the Climate Action Committee for their solar panel presentation. I think that we got some really good press for the town of Eastham as well on it. And it's a great thing, so I wanted to commend them. I also wanted to commend the Rec Department for the duck race. It was well-attended and the tide was moving very quickly. So, the poor guys in the kayaks had some trouble getting the ducks. And one shout-out, we gave away turkeys and also 15 pies from Hole-in-One. And Hole-in-One donated 10 of them. So, I wanted a shout-out to one of the businesses in Eastham that was great for supporting the children and families in the town.
It was the best duck race ever.
Really?
Yeah, I won a turkey.
You won a turkey.
Won a turkey, yeah.
The whole day.
Yeah, I was pulling the numbers out and they gave me grief because I'm on the board and he is. And I pulled my own out and...
And put it back.
I put it back, yeah.
Nice job.
Then he said, "Do you want to pull some numbers?" And this is right at the end, there were like three turkeys left. "Do you want to pull some numbers?" I said, "No, because I want to win." The next number he pulled was mine. So, it worked out real well.
I have one quick thing. I attended the, let me see if I can get this right, CARE for the Cape and Islands Plastic Reduction Summit, I guess a couple of weeks ago now. It was right after our last meeting, I think. And they had some really good ideas about how to reduce plastics for businesses and just what products are out there and that sort of thing. It was very good. And there were a bunch of local business, Mac, not Mac, Alex Hay was there from Mac Seafood and a bunch of other business owners. And I'm actually going to the recycling committee meeting tomorrow night. And we're going to talk about maybe bringing that bile-up change back for the plastics, probably not in its...
In a different form.
In a different form, but yeah, so I think that's a good...
Okay, I should've said this at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm going to make up for that now. The following must be announced at the beginning of the meeting by the chair of the committee, which I did not do. This meeting will be video-recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. The only other thing I have is that I attended the CMLA meeting last week. That's the Cape Management Leaders Association. It's all the select people from across the Cape. And the presentation that was made concerned a marketing, special marketing district. And they're going to come to us in one of our next meetings to present that to us. It's a program where local hotel owners contribute a certain percentage of their rentals to this Cape-wide marketing district. And it's then spread across the whole Cape to market tourism and things. So, they're going to come and speak to us in a week or so.
It was the Chamber?
Yeah, Chamber Commerce presented it, yeah, Cape Chamber.
And they're the recipient of the funding.
Yeah. But, it says that the funds that are donated, are sent in by the local hoteliers have to be used, benefit the local hoteliers. In other words, it has to be a direct benefit from the funds. Okay, does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to speak on that is not related to today's agenda? Okay, with that, we'll begin about this great gift that Dan Keen's going to tell us about.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone. It's not often I stand up here and I'm not asking for money, so...
We can applaud that.
This is kind of exciting. I just wanted to take a moment to tell you a brief story about how this gift came about. In September, nice weather, there was two little kids out in the back playground and they were looking into the apparatus bay. And I said, "Do you want to come in?" And they went in and I passed them off to Captain Leighton Race and firefighter Michael Looney. And these are two young guys, they're not, they don't have kids or anything. They spent probably an hour and a half with these two kids and lit those children up so much to the mother asked for a business card and sent me an email the following Monday. And she said, "We were so impressed by your operation and the people that you have there. I am part of a charitable foundation. And we do charitable gifts to first responders." So, the whole thing came from a simple, just being human and...
Being nice.
You know, outreach into the little kids. And she sent me photos of her children and she was absolutely thrilled. So, she asked for a wish list of what we would like if they could give some things. And one thing on the wish list, I said, "It's kind of expensive." And she came back and she said, "The three items you asked for, we approved all of them." So, it is, I actually have the check here, but I didn't do anything with it until I get approval. But it's from the Rick and Lee Schneider Charitable Fund and they're out of Waymouth. And they gave us a check for $18,500. And I am humbly requesting that we, that you accept this gift on behalf of the fire department so I can spend it.
Wow.
Pays to be nice.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept this gift on behalf of the fire department?
Second.
Yes, Jamie?
Yeah, I was just going to ask what the three things were on the three asks were.
So, two little things. The big thing that, so firefighters and cancer is a big push right now with our firefighting gear. So, we had purchased a, called a gear extractor. It's a big washing machine for our firefighting gear. And we have to keep it clean every single time. Our apparatus are custom-built with outside compartments so we can store our firefighting gear outside of where we sit in the trucks. It's to that point, but anytime we wash it, it takes days to dry. So, we, there was a big push on a gear dryer. And it's about $13,000 for a gear dryer. And to try to fit that into the budget, et cetera, well, when this came up, that's what it was, a gear dryer, which we are going to purchase. It has some heat to it. It will dry the gear in a matter of hours.
That's great.
So, it's really wonderful. There's a command board, which is for keeping track of my people, and a personal thermal imaging camera that is used by an officer first into a fire, so...
Oh, great.
Yeah, just some small things, but very important. And that gear dryer is going to go a long way. It's great, so...
Wonderful.
Yeah. Are we done with that?
We haven't voted yet.
You said to vote.
Any other discussion or questions?
Can I ask a question since you're here? What do you do while it's drying?
Oh, we have a second.
You have two sets?
Yeah, we have two sets of gear.
Okay, it just like rotates? Oh, my goodness.
Right, yeah. Which is a great segue once you make this vote.
Okay, we'll vote then.
Aye. Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Aye.
Is it okay?
Well, a favor, yeah.
Thank you. Dan, you have something else?
Thank you very much. Just as a point, this was not a gift that I had to request to be accepted, but my deputy, Lisa Albino, lives down Ireland Way. One of her neighbors, part-time residents, they are, they run a charitable foundation, a giant charitable foundation out of Texas. And they are neighbors to the Donna Hughes who lost their son, Michael, several years ago to, he was on a bicycle and got killed by a car on Governor Prince. But due to Lisa's passion for the department and them knowing that she worked here, over the past four years, that foundation has given us, through the Firefighter Association, that's where the gift went, they have given us $10,000, $10,000, and $25,000. And this year, when you talk about our second set of gear, it was going to be put in the capital plan to replace the gear because our second set of gear, our gear has to be within 10 years as our primary set of gear. It can't be that old. So, we have backup gear that is not compliant. It's over 10 years, but it's only to cover us in short-term cases. To purchase a new set of gear for everyone is very expensive. So, this foundation through Deputy Albino, she was able to show the need and they wrote us a check for $80,000 to replace all of our gear, to get a second set of gear. So, we're out there working hard and I think it shows the passion of the people that work at the fire department, how important it is to them and how they reflect to the community. So, I just wanted to share that. I'm pretty proud of my people, so, okay?
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing. The Eastham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 20th, 2023, at 5:30 PM at the Eastham Town Hall in the Earl Mountain Room, 2500 State Highway, and by remote participation on an aquaculture license transfer request. It is requested that the Jared Collins Aquaculture Licenses, Sites N1, N2, and N7 be transferred to Cameron Collins, expiring one hour after sunset on the first day of April 25. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak to that?
I don't have to. Car Shellfish Constable, Acting Shellfish Constable?
Stephanie Sykes, Acting Shellfish Constable with the Natural Resources Department. We have received all the proper documentation to support Eastham residency of Mr. Cameron Collins, and we support and respectfully request the license transfer.
Okay. Would you like to say something?
Hey, guys, thanks for having us. Yeah, the grants have been in my family for like almost 100 years, so I'd just like to keep the tradition going and, you know, just for the family and everything else. So, that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the select board. Jerry?
I make a motion that we reluctantly, sadly, approve the transfer of the aquaculture license from Jared Collins to Cameron Collins.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry? Yes. Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
I know how hard you work out there, Cameron. And you have been working to keep it going, so look forward to...
Our oyster sundae already, too.
Ah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to licensing. The first thing we have is Fat Mike's Incorporated DBA Red Barn, 999 State Highway for a common vixxer license and a beer, wine, and malt on-premise renewal.
How should we do these?
I was going to do them one at a time.
One at a time.
Rather than, would you rather we do them all at the same time?
I have no issue with grouping them.
Yeah. They're in our packet, they're grouped by type, like all the common vics are together and then the all alcohol on-premise are together, off-premise, so we could do them, we could do them as printed in the...
Yeah, I think either would work. It just, I wanted to show you that because all of those are included in the common vic application. So, not all of them are being approved for, you know, the all alcohol or all alcohol off-premises. So, however you want to do it, yeah.
Well, I'm okay with that except, you know, this, the first one's common vic and beer, wine, and malt. The next one's common vic, the next one's common vic and all alcohol. And then they're all alcohol, then a common vic...
Do you want to just read them all off and then we can vote as a block? How about that?
If that's okay.
Yeah, these are all renewals.
Yeah, they're all renewals. I think that's, they're all renewals, so that's why...
And everybody's happy with what was submitted?
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, the reason I'm okay with this because it is all renewals and everybody submitted all the appropriate documentation. I didn't see any kind of issue with what was submitted. So, to me, there were no, personally, there were no red flags there.
I have one question. Some have a certificate of insurance, some don't in the packet here. I don't know if everyone's done it. Some have a floor plan of the facility, some have a menu, some don't. I mean, I just, I don't, is there a...
There is uniformity to the application. Sometimes it doesn't get in your packet as a renewal, but generally speaking, they won't do a floor plan unless they're changing something.
All right.
Or we get a certificate of insurance on everyone.
Okay. I just think, just treat everybody the same. I mean, it's not all maybe in the packet. I just, I have no problem with any of them.
Yeah.
It's just that I just...
We will make sure that we get all the same information. That is what the clerk's office job is.
That's okay. Thank you.
I also have some of the menus. Kendra said they were too extensive to, like the Fairway has a very large menu, so they provided just a physical copy that didn't make it in the packet. So, if anyone wants to look at that, I do have that.
Okay. Thank you, Kayla. I just, it's just looking at the packet, you want to make sure everybody's treated equally, that if we demand, if we require Paper X from Amy, we need to require Paper X from Jerry.
We've been really working on this for two years now, Jamie?
At least, probably more than that.
Yeah.
Three and a half, anyway.
Yeah. So, trust me, honestly.
Thank you. No, I just raised it. I appreciate it. Okay. We got it good. So, I'll need a motion for the renewal of the following applications. Fat Mike's Incorporated DBA Red Barn, Common Vixxer Beer, Wine, Malt On-Premise Renewal. Inn at the Oaks, 385 State Highway, Common Vixxer. K&amp;K Havy Incorporated DBA Brick House Restaurant, 4940 State Highway, Common Vixxer All Alcohol On-Premise Renewal. Eastham Market Incorporated DBA Eastham Supparet, 2475 State Highway, Common Vixxer All Alcohol Off-Premise Renewal. Little Dory Cafe LLC DBA Casa del Cabo, 3 Main Street, Common Vixxer All Alcohol On-Premise Renewal, Annual Entertainment Renewal. Wellfleet Harbor Seafood Company Incorporated DBA Max Marketing Kitchen, 4680 State Highway, Common Vixxer Beer, Wine, Malt On-Premise Renewal. 4295 Eastham Corp. DBA Hole-in-One, 4295 State Highway, Common Vixxer. 4295 Eastham Corp. DBA Fairway Restaurant and Pizzeria, 4295 State Highway, Common Vixxer All Alcohol On-Premise Renewal. Orleans Eastham Elks Lodge, Number 2572, 10 McCoy Road, Common Vixxer All Alcohol On-Premise Renewal, Annual Entertainment Renewal. Eastham Council on Aging, 1405 Norsett Road, Annual Entertainment Renewal Application.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Because I'm hoarse now. Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay.
Now, just so you know, we may be getting more of these. They have until the end of December to, like mid-December to really get them to the ABCC, so...
Okay. The next thing is a Used Auto Dealership Renewal Application for Connors Clark Care Incorporated, 1040 Holmes Road.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, we'll move on to administrative matters. We have the following committee appointments. Paige Mansfield for the Board of Health and Elena Iceman for the Board of Health.
Who did the interviews?
I did the interviews and Paige has a background in real estate and Elena as a psychologist. And I want to thank Kate, I think it's Paradise, from the Search Committee for putting in all of the effort to organize us and pin us down to make a meeting and set it all up. And she was persistent and it was useful, so thank her.
Search Committee's got a difficult job.
They do.
Scheduling, I think, is getting people to commit to a date and a time.
Herding cats.
Herding cats. I was one of the cats. I was absolutely one of the cats, so a big thank you to Kate for doing that. And then I think that bring, if approved, it brings the board up to almost full.
I don't see any of the paperwork. Do we not get that for the Board of Health?
Their applications?
Did you get it?
I thought I...
Got it last week.
When you interviewed them, did you have the paperwork?
Elena is a, has a long history in psychology and so her resume is like 17 pages long, which includes all of the things that she has written and participated in since maybe the 70s. And then Paige has worked in, is a real estate broker.
That's not in?
And I feel like maybe I, hers wasn't as long, obviously.
I think usually what I think I'm looking for is like that, not so much their resumes, but the document that says whether or not they attended a meeting, whether or not they read the charge.
Right, the one page.
The one page. That kind of gives us an idea of if this is a good fit or not.
If you want to, just put it off till December 4th. It's not going to do any harm. If it wasn't in the packet, I'm very sorry.
Yeah, I just, the Board of Health is important.
It is important.
And I think it's important that the people that are applying to be on it have the right background and also the right motivation to sit on the board.
It might also be a decent opportunity for them to watch a Board of Health, attend a Board of Health meeting because I think, I'm not entirely sure if they had...
Done that yet.
Had done that quite yet.
Yeah, like those are the things that we, yeah.
Well, I know Kate was really anxious to get them on the board because they needed them based on them, but we can wait till the next meeting.
I mean, just because there's an opening doesn't mean it's the right person for the board.
Let me see.
I understand that, but I guess Suzanne interviewed them and she was comfortable with them, but we can wait.
I'd feel more comfortable waiting till we had all the paperwork.
Sure.
I did just text Kendra to see if I could find it.
Thank you.
Because I'm...
All right, so we'll get this on the next agenda then.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Committee resignations, Council on Aging, Bill O'Shea.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Bill O'Shea from the Council on Aging Board.
Second. Any discussion?
Can we get him on another board?
I don't think so, not right now.
Yeah, he's great.
Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, short-term rental cap discussion.
Do you write a letter to Bill?
I always do.
Just checking. Thanks, Art. Just getting it on the record.
My last letter wasn't in here. What happened to that one, Kayla?
Kayla's in trouble tonight.
What? Yeah, but normally, it normally goes in the, in the package with it.
Oh, okay.
All right, it's okay. Okay, I don't want to kick off this discussion.
I can start if you want.
Or did you, Jackie, did you want to start or can I just jump right in?
No, you can start.
Okay, I was excited to see this on here for discussion. And I think that the information that was included in the packet was fantastic and a great foundation for the board to consider. And I think maybe it's a little deceiving with the title, "Write Short-Term Rental Cap Discussion," because I don't think it's just a discussion about the short-term rental cap. I think that's a piece of it. But I think there's multiple tools that are in our packet that are being used by neighboring towns and available to us to hopefully get on some of our, to get on our warrant. I just lost my place. One of the ones I was really excited about, there were a couple of things that I saw, aside from just the cap, but I thought were more effective, were things that dealt with corporate ownership of short-term rentals and the ability to tie those properties back to actual humans. So, when a property is owned by an LLC, it would then have to tie back to, that LLC would have to be tied to actual human owners as opposed to a corporate ownership. So, you can't have a corporation owning and operating a residential property for profit, which in my opinion, goes against residential zoning. I thought, to me, this was like one of the most important tools in that whole packet because I think it really gets at the heart of what's coming and has already arrived in places like Provincetown and Antucket and Martha's Vineyard. And for Eastham to get ahead of the curve on this one would be a huge benefit. There were also other things that I thought were very interesting and great tools that we should consider, too, like the limit of changes of occupancy, you know, that you can only have so many rentals during a window. So, the limit of four, this was four changes of occupancy during July and August, limit of one short-term rental per person so that you can't end up with people owning multiple short-term rentals, things like that.
Does that, I tried to digest this and see, does it, it doesn't address cottages, though, cottage colonies.
Cottage colonies was the issue.
Yeah.
No.
Because that right there falls under, if you own more than one rental. And I don't understand why the cottages are included in that.
Right, and I think that was like why we backed off from that last time was, is there a way to get at that without negatively impacting cottage colony? Just because I would imagine the ownership structure of a cottage colony is different than the ownership structure of multiple properties.
Let's look at that.
Yeah, because they're all on one property.
Right, exactly. And that was my thought, yeah, like that this wouldn't touch it because it's...
Even though they're more units.
Right.
You know, it's interesting, I don't know if it still happens elsewhere or not, but back in the day when I was a public accountant, cottage colonies were treated as an operating business.
Right.
As opposed to a rental property, right? So, it was a Schedule C versus a Schedule E if you entered tax forms, but, you know, one was a business, one was a rental.
Right.
Business, so to speak. But cottage colonies were always businesses.
Because we, remember we ran into that those...
I'm sure we can exempt it even if we do something. I wanted to...
The fractional ownership.
Can I go back to the limit of changes of occupancy? Because I think we have, I have had some complaints about that from people who live next to a rental that's being rented, right? And they're fine with the weekly rentals, they're used to that, but now they're, I had two complaints this summer of people saying, "Now, it's like one night, two nights over the weekend, there's 10 cars there one night, there's 15 the next." It's, and it's scarier to people in a residential district than just having a family for seven days or the same people for seven days. So, that might, I wouldn't have thought that that was an issue that we have, but clearly it could be.
I think it becomes an increasing issue in the shoulder season because a lot of the short-term rentals open up their days and they've removed limits.
For the weekends, maybe.
Yeah, they remove limits usually around October, is what the trend I've been seeing.
I feel like there is something else in here that also was very specific in the number of people that could be, I think it was like two adults per bedroom and then two other people.
That's, you can, we control that from the rental certificate through the Board of Health, so we already do that.
And so, we do do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Part of the inspection is if our inspectors see that there are, that there are additional beds or places where beds can go or... they will comment and, and ask for a second inspection, so they'll ask for those things to be removed.
And how are we doing on inspections?
Great. I mean, they do, they do at least a third every year, so.
So it's not just a matter of identifying beds though, there is actual regulation that limits the
The use, yep. The number of people in the rental certificate.
One thing in here, this affordable housing units, that they're prohibited, aren't they already prohibited by the
Deed?
By the deed?
Yeah.
Well, if it's an affordable housing dwelling unit, short-term rentals are prohibited in dwelling units designed as affordable or designated as affordable or otherwise income restricted. I, I really thought we already had something like that.
I thought we did, yeah.
Maybe, is that Provincetown or Nantucket?
This was Nantucket's, I believe.
Because we can always call them and just see why that was included for them.
Because I thought that was a thing anyway with affordable, that you're, you're prohibited from renting it out, subletting or-
The fractional owner-
Yeah, the timeshare and fractional.
Timeshare and fractional ownerships we did send to the zoning task force, so that already went to them for their consideration.
Thank you.
I, I was interested in a couple of things that came out of this. And I have to admit, I didn't read everything on it. But it was interesting that they came to the conclusion that short-term rentals do not impact housing per se. And that short-term rentals can make housing more affordable for those people that can't afford to live in the area by providing the ability for them to rent their property out for certain periods of time and therefore help with the mortgage. But it, but short-term rentals weren't really impacting housing per se. The other thing was interesting was this thing about the, that we've talked about is, I guess you'd call it buying out year-round rentals. In other words, a subsidy for year-round rentals, so you can take somebody that, that's renting for the summer and come up with some sort of funds for them so that they'll be able to rent for a year and then make up the difference that they would lose not renting for the summer. I thought that was very interesting and as a definite way to increase our, our rental properties.
And we did talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that.
It's just funding it, I think that-
Yeah, how you do it, there's some of these towns had quite a bit of funds they were putting into it, so I read this.
Well, you have to understand the difference between
I understand.
Nantucket has eight million dollars a year in short-term rental tax and that was like three years ago, so I don't know how much it is now, and Provincetown is over five.
Do, do they use, is that what they use to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have two quick follow-ups on that, Art.
What?
Is okay, I just have two quick follow-ups to that.
Sure.
One, I think, I agree with what you're saying that historically, short-term rentals have been used by people to offset mortgage for year-round residents. You know, people I know in the past had moved in with their parents so they could rent out their place, so they could help offset the cost. I don't think that's the era we're moving into. I think we're looking at corporations leaning hard on residential properties as income and I think that we have the potential to be ahead of that curve. I think that, that world when people were, you know, offsetting their year-round home expense by doing a few rentals here and there, I think that's going to be in the past really soon because I don't think those people can even afford to be here at all at this rate. And so that's why I'm looking, you know, I think that some of the, the tools that I'm seeing in front of us get at that issue more directly. And the other thing that I like about a lot of these tools is that they don't really cost us money.
Right, some of them don't. I think going back to what you said though, Jamie, I think what's important is to balance the fractional ownership and timeshare thing is, is one issue, right? And the corporate ownership, that's one issue. I think we don't want to, we want to be very careful, or I would suggest that we want to be very careful as we're moving forward to limiting short-term rentals or capping them or making those restrictions, that we're not also eliminating a way that residents can also make a living in this way. And I think, you know, with our ADUs, we're really trying to build up those year-round rentals, but there may be a time when, you know, it may really help a family if they could rent a, if they had a cottage or an ADU or whatever. So we don't want to interfere with that.
Right.
So I think that's the balance that we're trying to strike, right?
Yeah, no, I can agree with that.
I thought it was interesting, their conclusion in the Provincetown study, the conclusion that if you really put a cap on short-term rentals, what you would do would not increase the full-time residents, but would push those built those homes to become quote vacation homes, that the people would use it during vacation and it would be empty the rest of the year. Is what the, was something I pulled out of the Provincetown sixty or seventy-page document, and I thought that that was, it was kind of interesting. But I do agree with Jamie that looking at the, the timeshare, the corporate ownership, you know, limiting the number of homes you have that you can rent, short-term rentals on and looking out for the cottage communities, I think that's, that's the way to go, kind of a, a full, a limit. I hadn't thought about though, the, the length that you had mentioned.
Number of turnovers.
The number of turnovers that you could have and so forth, that, that makes some sense. But I think a, to try and cap, put a cap on short-term rentals raises lots of issues and I'm not sure what the unintended consequences would be of that. So I think that we have to really, if we want to go in that route, we have to look at it very closely in a long time. But I think trying, following some of the ideas that other towns have done to stop the timeshare, we'll use that for sake of calling it some of the timeshare issue or corporate, corporate ownership. I think that's important for us to, to take a look at. I mean, you're talking to someone who rented his, rented his home to keep it and used it and then we could use it just as a vacation home, shifted and then it became, here I am. As a resident.
I, I am going to be recommending at our fee hearing this year that we raise the price of rental certificates. So just be aware that that's definitely something that we're going to do, looking at the comparisons right now of the other towns around us. And we haven't changed our fee in, I don't, twenty years that we've had the program.
Ours is fifty dollars?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Can we get the data? I mean, it seems like it'd be relatively easy since we do the rental certificates.
Yep.
Get the data that says, here's how many properties are being rented. How many owners are renting multiple properties?
We did that, yeah.
Okay, I mean, own multiple properties and renting them. How many rentals are owned by corporations? I mean, the, the kind of things you're talking about in here, to pull that data out so that we have an idea of what the size of that problem is right now.
Yeah, I don't, I think you're going to find that there are people, we looked at this last year, there are people that have multiple units. But we don't have any stated corporations right now. I think the fractional ownership and timeshare bylaw, if we do that, would be to absolutely get ahead of that because we are seeing it now in Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard and Provincetown, probably Chatham too. It's coming.
Yeah, can I just, Art?
Art, Jamie wants to-
Yeah, I think to, to Jackie's point too, that I think that some of those numbers might not indicate that it's a, a right-now problem. And that's why I think that I really pushed to hopefully, you know, get this information out there because I think that it is a, a problem that's coming and it would be fantastic to be progressive.
It would, because it's very rare that we're able to, I mean, businesses and corporations and individuals always, you know, are nimble and smart and can take advantage of, you know, the market trends and are studying the market trends, when we're always, as municipal government, we're always reacting to that. So it would be nice to actually get ahead of it. And I think we have the opportunity to do that with this one.
Yeah, I mean-
But I can also get for you, what I'll get for you for our next meeting is the number of housing units we have total in town, the number of rental certificates we have currently and how many are year-round and how many are short-term, because we do have quite a few year-round rental certificates as well, so we'll get that for you.
Can I ask for one more thing, Jackie? One of the things that I, looking at it, thinking about the time, timeshare question, is a property owned by a trust that might be a trust that my father set up and therefore the beneficiaries are me and my siblings and we each share-
As Jamie said, they're individual people, they're not a corporate ownership.
Right.
It says this section of-
This section says it, yeah.
Yeah, it says this shall not apply to non-commercial groups such as families, partnerships, association or trusts with divided interests or agreements in which the real estate is held transferred within the family partnership association or trust. As opposed to sold in fractional or divided interests on the open market.
No, yeah, that, yeah, that I know Suzanne, I think the question was if we can get that information as well, I think that that's an issue.
Oh, how many trusts we have?
How many trusts that are doing short-term rentals.
Oh, God. I, I don't know.
You know, like Jerry, you being a lawyer, you could probably imagine a scenario where someone could gain a trust, right?
Yes.
You could buy into a trust.
Yes.
And be a beneficial owner, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'd do.
That's, that's-
Is that much different?
That's the issue.
It's different than, well, I mean, I suppose a family could easily become a corporation, but that's really not what we're trying to fight.
No, it wouldn't be a family trust, I mean, I think we all understand that, you know, you're like kids in a family.
So some random person would buy into a family trust?
Someone would, some corporation would create a trust and then sell interests, you know, you can buy in to be a beneficial owner of my trust.
But don't they have?
You can't all have a beach sticker though.
They don't have a beach sticker.
As long as you have a beach sticker.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Jerry owns
Uh-oh.
Three duplexes in town.
Okay.
And he rents them out on a yearly basis. He lives in town, he has his own house, but he owns three duplexes which he rents on a yearly basis.
They're year-round homes.
Year-round. Does this address that in terms of multiple ownership, multiple ownerships?
No, short-term.
Because those are all long-term.
As long as he's renting on a yearly basis.
We don't care how many units they own.
It's over thirty days, right? It's not a short-term rental.
Yeah, right.
If it's over thirty days, it's the cutoff. So if you rent for a month, you rent July and August, it's not a short-term rental.
I mean, I hate to be a stickler, but Art's got a good point too, because that's a pretty common occurrence like on Long Island. People do summer shares, they'll buy a house, rent, so that gets around the short-term rental of thirty days, right? You buy a ninety-day rental, you buy a summer rental. So I mean, if it's valuable enough, I mean, Measam isn't in that position.
Cape always used to have summer rentals though and that-
We used to always have summer rentals here, yeah.
And that's where workers, workers would do a summer rental, they would.
I don't hate summer rentals.
You'd have to pay half upfront and then half by like August first or something.
You kind of might have to get to the sublet issue, right? So, you know, I've got a lot of money, I'm going to-
My head's hurting now.
I will, I'll rent a couple of houses for the summer and then I'll let people stay there.
I mean, I think the point is that there always is going to be a corporation or someone with financial interests that's going to find a way to get around something.
Yes.
That's why the fractional ownership exists, because it got around all the timeshare regulation that exists in different towns. And that's why P-Town had to step up and do fractional ownership because their timeshare bylaw didn't apply. And so I think that's why it's important to do these things now and to always stay on top of it because there's always going to be someone who's going to try something different to come through the back door and get around a regulation.
I guess my only point of saying that was I think there's a long, there's a gap between what's considered a short-term rental, thirty-one days, and a year-round rental.
Yes, correct.
And whatever you be craft ought to contemplate that.
Needs to address that. And I think the point is, if I can read the room a little bit, the point is, you know, when you're in a residential neighborhood, right? You want neighbors. Like I have a this, I have a person next to me and across the street from me that once from Boston and once from Connecticut, but they're neighbors. I know who they are, I have their phone numbers, they come down when they come down.
They're humans.
They're human beings and I can get to know them over time. That's what you want next to you. You don't want, you know, a boarding house that's converting every changing hand, you know, people every three days and having parties. You don't want a, a house that's having tent weddings every Saturday night all throughout the summer. That is not what we want in a residential neighborhood. So I think that's, just to answer the question of why are we even talking about this, I think that's why we're talking about it, right? Is because we want our residential neighborhoods to be residential neighborhoods.
Yeah.
We don't want to stop people from doing short-term rentals if that's the way they afford their homes, but you know, not if it's a business in a residential zone.
You mentioned the, going back to Rich's point about the, the difference between the thirty-one days and the year, there is that gap there. We have people every year who need to come here and have somewhere to stay to work, so there, we need three-month rentals too. Or the people who found the winter rental and they don't have anywhere to go for the summer rental and I mean, what I've gathered from housing at this part, point is like it's not just one solution, it is literally just like a buckshot of all of them. It needs to be all of them that will like hopefully address this little part and then you see how that goes and then adjust as needed. And I know Jerry, you mentioned unintended consequences, we're already feeling some like pretty terrible unintended consequences of a lot of policies on a state, national, just like economic level. And now we have to deal with it retroactively and so I would rather try something to like address the issue than be like, well, you know, I don't know, like maybe that'll have an unintended consequence when the consequence that we currently have is pretty bad. Like people don't have places to live and that will, we're, we're getting there on how much it's going to affect our community, like businesses will close, people won't be able to like get the services they want, there's not going to be any children in the schools and like
Who wants to live in that community?
And who wants to live in that community? And it's stressful too, to just like constantly, it's stressful to know that people can't access housing and that it's such a conversation. And I know it's a conversation across the country, but it is, it's stressful for our neighbors and it's stressful to live in a community where like we all carry that stress because it's everywhere, anyway.
Does anybody else have anything? What's the next step?
I didn't know if anybody from the-
So I-
Just listening, Mary, or do you want to?
I'll chime in, do you want me to stand here?
Uh, no, no, you have a microphone, Mary. Yeah.
Thanks for being here for this.
No problem. We, Mary knee with the Eastham Zoning Task Force. We did put the fractional ownership on the agenda for us to take a look at. And I had a question as to whether we're going to be examining short-term rentals. It was something we did last year. I don't have the data in front of me, but when we interviewed staff last year about how many people had multiple rental certificates, my memory was it was five or six. Yeah. It, it wasn't a big issue. And, and the administrator said, I know all these people, they're local. So, so at least last year, we didn't have anything that appeared to be corporate and there weren't many. Now that can cut a couple ways. I mean, in some respects, since there's not many multiple rental owners, putting in a short-term rental cap now, you could grandfather the six people that have still, you know, that have been doing it for a while and maybe move forward. So I just put that out there. But I think the larger issue is we did not make a recommendation last year because it did require changes in administrative procedures. And there wasn't a real appetite for making wholesale changes, so when we didn't see a big corporate problem and there, there was a little bit of resistance, we just sort of said, well, maybe it's not the right time. So we certainly could look at that again, but I guess I, I just want clarity if, if that's something we should be looking at or not.
I think fractional ownership and times- I think fractional ownership and timeshare is something we should absolutely be looking at.
Okay.
I think the other things have nuances. And what's interesting in looking at Province Town in Nantucket is to look at those communities. Like some of those nuances, I don't even know why they're in there, but I'm sure there was an issue that they're trying to get. And that's why they're there.
The big one is the corporate ownership, I think.
Corporate, yes.
That's the other one. I think that's the second.
I have to say, we have been approached this year, I am aware of a corporation who wants to purchase a property to make short-term rentals.
Okay. That's true.
So, yeah, I think it's important that we look at that.
I, I do.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I just think it is a thing.
I will just say that in anticipation of looking at some of these issues, we did invite the town planner from Province Town. Where the task force will meet on December 5th. And at four o'clock, the first half hour, he is going to be on Zoom because we wanted to ask all of the questions of the background and how did you come about this?
Thank you.
You know, obviously as an open meeting, everyone's welcome to join that, December 5th at four o'clock.
Is it the library?
No, I think it's here, but he's actually zooming in. I don't think he's gonna be physically present.
To your point about the handful of people who own multiple rentals in town and thinking about some of these policies as I read through them, there is the tendency to legacy in existing conditions. And so in the same sort of spirit of getting ahead of this, of maybe we just have five people now, but maybe that might change. And thinking about, okay, if we are going to change the conditions, what are we gonna legacy in? And to catch it before it goes in a direction we don't want it to. Kind of like when we did the house size.
Exactly.
We caught it, I feel like, at a really great time before it was like, oh, well, all of these properties, like it's just a handful of properties left that aren't gonna be super massive. And so, not that I necessarily need that answer right exactly now, but I am interested in continuing to have the conversation of do we want to set some sort of limit on how many short-term rentals there are in town? Or how many one person can run? Or if we want it to be owner occupied? Or all of the other tools that some other communities have used to try and address this issue?
But I think to make that decision, you have to know how many units of housing we have, how many rental certificates we have and for what purpose? So that we can look at the proportions now and then just, you can decide, you know, is this too much? What would be too much?
Right. Well, and then I think part of the review of P-Town was that you have a lot of second homeowners that use their property and then rent it in the in-between. And I wouldn't imagine that Eastham is too terribly different. I know a lot of second homeowners and they don't even do a short-term rental. It's just their, it's just their second home.
It's a vacation.
It's just their vacation home, so.
Jackie, we have about 5,175 units.
I thought it was.
And we have, last year, we had, last year in 2022, there was 1,091, just 1,091 rentals.
Short-term?
Short-term. So approximately, oh, no, excuse me, that's total rentals.
Okay.
That's total rentals. So it's about 20% of the property is being rented either year-round or short-term. These are rental certificates.
And it might be a little higher than that now. Not too much, but I wanna say 1260 with about 100 of them being year-round rentals was the last number I had.
Yeah, my dad is about a year and a half old, so.
Would you have also the number of, just then, vacation homes?
No.
No.
I mean, and one of the.
Well, we, on the census, we can tell you how many year-round homes are occupied. That's a census question.
Right, and then you subtract that and you get it.
I think it's probably like 3,000 maybe.
I'm not sure. I don't know that yet.
And I don't, I, you know, to your point, Jerry, I think that, you know, when you're talking about the vacation home versus the rental homes, I, unless it's being used as a year-round rental, if someone has a property that they're just using as a short-term rental, they're not renting it in the winter either. That's sitting vacant, just like a vacation home.
Right.
You know, because they're not maintaining it and it's not the income that makes it worth it.
Well, yeah, that was the thing that the Province Town study said though, that if you put the cap on a short-term rental, if I'm doing a short-term rental for a part of the summer and then it's vacant in the winter, the pressure is that it doesn't suddenly become a property that's available for a full-time, for full-time rental or sale for a full-time. It becomes a vacation home where it's empty in the summer.
No, because this is only short-term rentals. You can always rent for a longer span of time. That doesn't apply to anyone who wants to rent for a longer span.
Right, but what, the thought that I got out of that study was if you put a cap on short-term rentals, and so therefore I, I can't, I'm not gonna make it a long-term rental, I'm gonna make it a vacation home. I'm gonna just come in the summer and it's gonna be empty in the winter. I'm not going to get another unit that's available for full-time residents.
I don't know if I'm getting.
Right, it's not gonna solve the problem.
No.
Right.
It, it, no one, I don't think anyone on the board thinks that.
Right. I don't think any thi, one thing does, but that's why I think we're looking at all the things.
Yeah.
Especially, like you said, the timeshare fractional and the no corporate ownership. I think those are two strong starting points to look at, you know? And maybe, again, maybe the cap is something that I think the board, we're always gonna revisit. And, you know, it doesn't mean that now is the right time to put a hard cap in place, but it's something that we should always be revisiting and talking about and figuring out because that could change.
And, and to make it maybe a little less enticing to do that with property. Like Airbnb took everybody by surprise in how it changed housing. Because you could suddenly rent your house and you could go on vacation in a house and it was maybe cheaper than a hotel. And it changed our housing market, absolutely changed our housing market. And so I, I get that it might not be a very direct, one-to-one, like we do this and then we get year-round housing out of it.
Right.
But it makes it less attractive for people to make investment properties out of what could be a single-family home.
Or what's supposed to be. It's supposed to be a residence, it's zoned residential. That's what drives me crazy.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Right, so it's maybe a little, yeah.
One of the other things that I've heard is, and I don't know how true it is, that the issue with taking a home, renting it in the summer at one rate and then renting it for the rest of the year at the other rate, there's a real concern about the ability to get that person out of that home.
Oh, yeah.
In May or June or whatever. That it becomes difficult to get them to leave and therefore becomes a problem if you wanna rent that way. I mean, that'd be a great way to rent. You rent at a certain rate in the summer, another rate in the winter, but you have to have the ability.
Not for the winter person.
Yeah.
Yeah, not for the person that has to rent.
Homelessness is.
Get them out.
They can go live in Nickerson or live in the fire roads because there's nowhere to live.
The other thing.
Because that's what's gonna happen.
The other thing is that Suzanne, I just read an article today that it's actually more expensive to do VRBO in Airbnbs than hotels.
It is now. I don't think it started that way, yeah. And, you know, moving out into homelessness, I wouldn't be super keen to wanna leave either because you don't have anywhere to go.
No, but it's just, it causes a problem for both parties.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think there used to be a time on Cape Cod, I'm old enough to remember a time on Cape Cod when you could do summer and winter rentals. And it wasn't, it wasn't that big a risk because there were places to move into.
Right.
But.
And Nickerson isn't really an option either because they limit, they limit you to two weeks.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Yep.
Jerry, one thing, for, for Mary, I think Jamie has talked about, you know, timeshare and corporate ownership. I think you should, one of the things to look at is a limit on the number of premises, buildings that I, Jerry Siriskel, can own and rent in a short-term rental.
Well, I think what you're talking about is the limit on how many short-term rentals per person?
Per person, per owner.
Per owner.
Per owner.
I think it was in here, it was written as the limit of one STR per person.
Right, and one, I think, yeah, and Nantucket won't add two, I think.
Yeah, so that means in Province Town, if two people own a home together, you can have two short-term rentals as well as that, two short-term rental certificates.
I mean, I think that the, I think the timeshare fractional ownership.
I don't think that's a meaningful limit.
Right, and I think the corporate and the no corporate ownership of short-term rentals are more meaningful.
Right.
Than the limit on the individual, you know, because I don't think that that's the growing problem. I think the growing problem are those first two things.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's a non-issue, Jerry, but I do think that if we're gonna, you know, time is a commodity and I know that the zoning task force does a great job with it, but there's always so much to ask. And I feel like if there were only two asks, those would be my two asks.
Yep.
Okay, so what's the next step? Did you get this data from us?
So we have one more question from the.
December 4th.
I'm sorry.
Oh. Yeah, December 4th at four o'clock, they're gonna.
We're gonna be interviewing the town planner from Province Town.
I understand that, but the next step for us, December 5th?
5th or 4th?
Tuesday is the 5th, I believe.
This, okay.
5th, four o'clock.
I think that the next step for us would be if you're, if you're comfortable leaving it with zoning task force and having them report back, which is usually what they do somewhere in the warrant opening time, that's great. And if not, we could always, you know, have another conversation.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I just wanna make sure, like obviously the timeshare fractional ownership and then the other part is the no corporate ownership of short-term rental. Those are the two things that we, we are comfortable with?
Yep.
Definitely.
And we should not be looking at rental caps?
For this year, I don't.
Probably not yet.
No.
I think that the board should continue to talk about it, but I don't think that we need to put that on the task force at this point.
I'll get you more information on how many we have.
Did we want to talk about turnover limits? That was the other thing that the board seemed to be. Or do we wanna just continue to discuss that as the board and wait till we?
Yeah.
Okay, so just those two things.
Trying to think of where we would put that.
All right.
If we don't have, right? We don't have a cap, where would we stick a limit on?
I don't know the legal answer to this, Jackie, but could, since most, if not all of your short, your rental certificate is now embedded in your regulations within the health board.
Yep.
Could that, could that regulatory change be made?
You're right.
So we wouldn't even need to?
That's awesome.
Put that as a future agenda item then?
For the Board of Health?
I, I don't know legally, but it.
Both of us?
Well, Hillary's gonna come back, she's gonna do the opioid presentation for you. And so she'll be here in front of us, so we can talk about that with her. We'll put that on the same agenda. How's that?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mary.
Tom.
We can do it as part of the rental certificate program.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom McMurra. I'm a vice president of the Eastham Part-Time Residents Tax Payers Association. And it's been a great discussion here tonight, really. I've heard all sorts of perspectives that I haven't thought about before. I did read the UMass report that was done by P-Town and it was very informative. Actually, first I'm here to offer our help as an organization because any caps and STR, and I agree with the perspective that Jamie put out about the corporation fractional ownership, timeshares. I do have, as, you know, myself and the organization, concern about when we're limiting the number of STRs. We do have a number of folks that did raise concern in the organization about capping. And as I read the report that UMass did, it's, what is the problem we're trying to solve by cap?
I am just gonna say that this, we didn't open this up to a public hearing for other people to discuss, so I just don't know how far we can go with.
It's not a public hearing, he's making a comment.
It's okay, okay. I just wanna make sure, because I didn't want anybody else to be like.
And I'll take a lot of time.
Yeah, no worries.
So I did, you know, what is the problem we're trying to solve so we can understand that too? Offer our services from the perspective of people who would be impacted directly by the STR. So maybe together we can come up with something that works for all of us. I was happy to hear about things like grandfathering people that, you know, might already own more than, you know, one property in town, et cetera. So I, I'd lead you with that perspective. Offer our help, hopefully you'll take it up. If not, maybe the zoning board as well, if they're tasked with coming up with a problem. But a lot of our residents do, and I was one of them at one time. I did rent my property in order to afford that mortgage to allow me now to not have to rent it. But many of our folks are renting it, would be seriously concerned if they were limited relative to being able to off, you know, get an STR certificate, that one or that two. And I come back to, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And let us help you solve something that will work for you guys and work for us.
I think the takeaway then with the cap discussion is if you don't have your rental registered with the town, you should register your rental with the town soon. That's definitely the takeaway. And this is just, actually, I'll bring this up at the end, so I'm good, I'm good on that.
So I'm gonna come back to you with some data. We can always chat with Hillary about some stuff and then we can decide on next steps.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the wastewater letter. Do we need to do anything with this? Okay, everybody okay with that?
Are you okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, town manager's report.
Lots of good stuff in here.
There are? Oh, good. I just wanna go over a couple of things and I'm gonna turn it over to Kayla to talk to you a little bit about some communication stuff she's sending out. We have started up the capital projects committee, first meeting, I know. And I think it's gonna be a great group. And Kayla has also worked on a specific like website for them where we can put all the data that they need for their meetings so that we don't have to, and keep loading all the capital projects info on that so that we don't have to print thousands of things. Because in looking back, that was the challenge we both had, is like there's so much information. If you wanna go back over the water project, for instance. So town hall renovation project, we have the contracts signed, the contractors are ready to mobilize. They're gonna be doing it in phases, try and stay on this side of the building and doing some of the concrete work in the fall. Not, not to start the repointing until the springtime because the bricks have to be a certain temperature. It's very complicated. First ever CERT team.
Yes, congratulations.
Two members. It's a very quality group despite these two, it's very quality.
Thank you, Jackie.
That was a really long training.
It was. I, I was gonna add up all the hours and.
I know, it's a long.
It's a lot.
It's a 40, no.
More than 40, I think.
It was a lot.
Yeah.
Did you need it all?
Uh, no, but it was good to see it all, I think.
Some of it, the BACH team out of, out of Harwich and Chad and Orleans is really, really like gung-ho.
Yeah.
I mean, really, really. And so we spent, you know, some of those three-hour sessions, could have been cut back. We didn't need all the detail we got and all the stories we got, but it was worthwhile. And some of them were very, very good. You know, the, the firemen that came in and did the CPR and the AED and that was really interesting. So there's a bunch of stuff that was great.
Yeah, and I think we really, we're, we're gonna sit down with Adam, you know, in probably the week after Thanksgiving and sort of, you know, debrief on what, what do we feel, you know, was necessary? So that going forward, we wanna do training for new members on the CERT. They don't have to do all this stuff.
What do they need to do?
What do they need to do? Just to, right. Because our main focus is gonna be sheltering.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's not really what they do down there, so they didn't really.
I asked Adam for a blue light and a sirene now that I've got all this.
God help us.
Dan, they told me they would give me a radar gun and a red light.
Oh, no.
So I'm all set.
So are they competing now? Sitting in front of my house during school, when they're going to school.
The business improvement plan, you're gonna be getting recommendations. I think Paul Lagus and Phil Burt are coming on.
We're meeting.
Second meeting in December. I think it's the second meeting.
We're meeting, I think, we're meeting in next week.
Okay.
With all the proposals.
Strategic planning, the first meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee went extremely well. We got through all of our tasks, we had, it was an extremely aggressive agenda, looking at four different goals or objectives or strategies, I can't remember what they were, but, and it was great. We did it in under two hours, and I think it's gonna be really good. I think we're gonna actually have a decent update for town meeting. And that's about it. I'll let Kayla talk about some communications.
Yeah, we're just gonna do some holiday-related stuff surrounding Thanksgiving, and kind of just being thankful for our employees and community members and volunteers, the list goes on and on. And then, we're also gonna do something, I believe, on Giving Tuesday for the Tax Aid Committee, just because they still are very short on donations, so we're hoping to maybe do a flash with that, and maybe we can get some money for them.
And then, we'll be doing the Town Hall closing hours and all that stuff around the holidays, so we have different, the Town Hall, the landfill, or transfer station, library, we're all on different sort of schedules, so she's gonna put that out, too.
Yeah, so Town Hall closes at 12:00 on Wednesday, Council on Aging will close at 12:00, Transfer Station will close at 11:30, and the library will be closing at 4:00. And then, everyone will be closed on Friday and Saturday, Thursday and Friday.
Just in case you need a book for Thanksgiving Day.
You can download an ebook.
Oh, yeah, you can do that.
From the comfort of your home.
You can, it's very easy.
Okay, new and upcoming agenda items and needed follow-ups, anybody have anything?
Just a quick, can I just ask Mary a quick question before you? December 2nd, that's 9:00 AM at Town Hall?
December.
No, yeah, it's here.
Right here.
Charette.
The fifth is also.
The fifth is in, we usually meet.
Right, second is here.
Second is here.
Thank you.
I had a question about the second, the stakeholder charette. Is that, is that a drop-in, or it's a, it's a all, it's a all-day?
I mean, as a select board member, you would certainly be welcome to drop in, and if you wanted to do it, but for the businesses, it's, it should be the whole commitment of the whole program.
I mean, it's on my calendar, I just.
Sorry.
I would encourage you to come, only because form-based code design is something I've been looking at for six months, and I have to keep looking again to get it in my head. It's, it's an exciting concept, but they're gonna walk us through this, and then give, so it's a really, it's almost like a training and a planning and an input session, and if we come back in February or March with proposals, again, I would really hope that everyone is grounded in the concepts, because I think it's just not intuitive to get it right away.
I guess I had another, a follow-up question of, it is for business owners, but can other people attend? You just want the business?
We really, we really just want the people that are in the district.
Business districts for this meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, I told Paul I had someone in mind that had contacted me that was curious, that they're thinking of starting a business, and he said, let, you know, I told him to get ahold of Paul to sign up, if, because that, that would qualify, too, it's someone that's, if they want to do business in town.
I mean, I don't think this is gonna be the only opportunity to talk about it. I think this is a very focused opportunity to talk about it, and so, he's trying to focus it on.
Okay, all right, but so.
It's kind of like a focus group, not really, but.
We're, we're really trying to get some input now, and, and build some understanding of what this new zoning looks like and what the processes are. So, I mean, it's, it's important for the businesses, very important, and I know Paul's knocking on lots of doors, trying to drum up as much interest, but I think it's also very important for anyone who's gonna be in the process of, of either managing these regulations with the zoning board, or the select board needing to approve all of this stuff, so.
Yeah.
Do you, Mary, just a quick question, would you see us as interacting at all at this meeting, or?
Absolutely.
Then we probably should post it, if, because there's already three of us now that.
I'll be going for part of it.
Yeah, I'll, I plan on going, so.
Got it, Kayla?
I'm trying to stay as long as I can.
I think Paul was intending to post it.
Okay.
And I think there, I know there'll be some video, but it's, we're gonna be working in small groups and moving around, so it's not gonna lend itself as easily.
It should be taped, yeah.
Gotcha.
So, one more question. Will, my understanding is that we're looking at this because it will ultimately affect what we do on T-Time and Town Center Plaza, and I guess, in my mind, that is farther-reaching than just the business community, because it could potentially change what it looks like, or what goes there, and so, I was just wondering when the public will interact with this.
I don't know. I can't answer that question today.
Okay, that's fine.
This is step one.
Okay, that's fine, if it's step one, I just, and then also don't want to invite people who aren't.
The public would have to vote on it if it goes before town meeting, so we certainly have to do something between now and town meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I would just say, we are starting from a point that, whether it's the strategic plan, or the T-Time and Town Center plans, we're, we're starting with those, those are the vision. And now, we're just looking at the zoning regulations, the dimensions, the heights, the setbacks, you know, any sort of architectural elements that fit within that vision, so we're not changing vision, as you say, in terms of the mixed use, or any of those other concepts.
Jerry, did you have something? Yeah, I'd like to, not for the next meeting, but probably after the budget thing, I would like to get another presentation, similar to one that Jane gave us on wastewater, when I was on the Finance Committee, it was a joint meeting. We're going through, it was at a time before the DEP had ever approved the, an IA septic system, and to go through, kind of go through it again in specifics of how much nitrogen comes in, and what do we have to get out, and so forth, that was a great presentation to help us go step-by-step looking at it, and I think we, we need to do that, Art, because 160 million is only step one, and we've learned some new stuff for what's happening, and I think it would be good to, to have a full markup on what we can and can't do, what is expected, and some of the costing that we've seen, again, so that our citizens get a full picture of what we're, on what we will base our, our recommendations.
So, tell me again what the presentation was?
The presentation that she, that Jane brought was here, and I think it was basically only looking at salt pond. Here's the amount of nitrogen.
How far ago was this?
The year before it came on, so three years, two, two or three years ago.
Was it the barrier?
It, it was more than just the barrier, it was showing through.
It had that flyover, kind of, where it followed it.
The barrier would remove this much, the fertilizer would remove this much, and so much nitrogen, we can't reach the target we need without having a sewage system.
Eighty percent is wastewater.
What it, yeah, and.
Fourteen percent is.
Right, and it was at a time, it was at a time when, when the DEP had not approved any IA septic system.
Still haven't.
I think they haven't approved one.
Last thing I heard, they haven't.
I thought they, they still haven't.
Not at the advanced level, they, was, there's five or six of them now, but, that we're using, but they're not at the level that DEP is requiring removal.
Okay, see, I, I think that's what we need to get out, that this is, the state, the state's giving us, you either in twenty, set up a plan to take care of wastewater, and have it approved, and you have 20 years. If you don't do it, within five years, every facility in, in the town has to put in an IA system.
So, that's why we're sending the letter to the DEP?
Oh, I know, I know, that's where, I'm totally in favor of this. What I want to do is get as much information out as possible, because this is a big-ticket item, so that the citizens understand our thought process and, and all the information on which we're basing our decisions. Have it out there in, in front, because if you do the simple math, Jackie, just simple math, and not knowing anything, because I've, 160 million dollars and is what this, the sewage system would cost.
It makes me crazy when you say that.
She doesn't like the 160 million.
We're not accepting, we're not accepting 160 million dollars.
That's fine, then we don't have to go through the math, but we need, we need the numbers to go through, so we can constantly have in front of the public what we're thinking, where we're at, what options we have, and don't have.
Just a review of the phases, you know, there's two or three phases, here's the first phase, here's the second phase.
We don't, we don't.
No, it's.
We don't know anything yet.
We just do this?
They're not NS.
Yes, we do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and I don't mean to be rude, but like, I feel like this is the presentation we just had.
No, we didn't have a presentation of what other options are. The state says you gotta get IA stuff, we don't have any presentation on what it is and what failure that is if we don't do it. If we don't come up with that 20-year plan.
I say, okay, so let me get this, you want a presentation on if we don't do a wastewater system?
I want to know what, what, yeah, because that's an option, potentially, that we have. I want the citizens to know what it is.
Oh, okay.
I thought we had decided that that wasn't an option, and we were gonna pursue wastewater.
I think he wants to spell it out, so it's clear as to why we're not doing that.
I want it really simple, yes, so that they understand it. We're gonna be going before.
Why we're going this route and not.
Yes, I want it nice and clear, not in a hun, you know, page 10 of a hundred-page document, I want it slide number two, here's what it is. Yes, I want it, that's what I want to see.
Okay, it's confusing to me, because we are doing everything possible, and it looks like we will be successful in avoiding that whole five-year issue.
Yes.
Okay. The way we're avoiding that is by submitting our wastewater management plan and these two letters.
And we've.
You've already made the decision to do that.
We've made that decision, it's gone.
The taxpayers have, have authorized 6 million dollars to design a system.
Right.
When we start to design that plan, then we'll have things like numbers and data, but right now, we don't have any more numbers and data than we had a month ago. So, I, I mean, I think what we can do is guestimate what, like, I can, I, there are cost estimates on what a three-bedroom, three-bedroom IA system is, so we could cost estimate how much that would cost, and perhaps how much you'd have to pay each year in annual maintenance for that, versus the debt service on, even if it's 140 million, minus 25% from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, which you would not get if you did an IA system, minus 0% interest on borrowing, what that debt service would be.
I, that's what.
I get terrified, Jerry, to put any of those numbers out, because we did this in the water system, and a lot of it wasn't true.
Right.
And I, John Knight sat here and said it's gonna cost 1,800 dollars or 2,500 dollars to connect to the water system, and then we found out that some people had to pay 10,000, you know, Barbara Nickel had to pay 70,000 for Willie's job, so it's not the same, there is no 2,500, so I don't want to say, this is, I'm just talking to you, this is, I don't want to say.
I understand.
An IA system costs 35,000 to 50,000, and then you have 2,000 to 4,000 dollars in operational costs every year, and that will cost you this much money, versus what, I think it's too soon to do that, I really do.
Okay, I just.
And you know we're not voting on wastewater this May?
That I know.
Okay.
I, I, I know, and that's why, you know, push it off, but I think that.
I don't think we're pushing it off, I think it's just that it's not there yet, you know?
Well, at some, at some point, we have to show, it's my understanding, at least, I think, that if every home in Eastham put in an IA system, just put it in, just say they did, that it wouldn't reduce the amount of nitrogen we have to reduce. So, even putting in IA systems, we would still be forced to put in some form of a sewage system.
I'm not sure that's true.
If that's not true, that's what we need to know.
That's what the Targeted Watershed Management Plan indicates, right?
Yes.
So.
No, the Targeted Watershed Management Plan is the town's current community-based plan to address our nitrogen issue.
Right.
And clean up our waters. If you want an individualized plan to do that, which I thought as a town we've already decided is not a good idea, then we don't, we have not, we have not designed that, and we have not costed it out.
Right. I'm not.
But I don't think, honestly, if we did, if we said 500, 5,175 IA systems are going in the ground tomorrow at a cost of this much money, and each resident is paying this much, I'm not sure the DEP could do anything about that. I think, honestly, it might not solve our problem, but their regulations state that, that that's acceptable right now, so.
Yeah, that's the.
I think that TWMP is fashioned in such a way to, to achieve the removal requirement that we need to achieve, which is why it's recommending.
In a much more limited fashion than having 5,000.
It's recommending a centralized sewer system, because that's what will achieve the nitrogen removal that needs to be achieved.
Yes, and that would be nice, to make sure it's out there, that this is why we're recommending going this way. At the moment, I don't think, I don't think we've had anything come in that shows us whether or not the IA systems will achieve the goal that we need to achieve.
No, so why mention them at all?
Because the state says that's something you can do.
But we've already made the choice not to do that, Jerry.
Well, we've made the.
You just voted as a board to submit that plan to the DEP.
Oh, yes, I understand, but once you.
We're permitting the system right now, that's what we're doing, that's the, the point.
We're permitting it right now, or we're getting approval first?
We're getting, we're going through the MEPA process to get approval, so we're permitting the, that's what it is, that's what we're doing. And we're designing it as we do it.
Yeah, getting a permit to do it.
Yeah. So, we, I think in some senses, we've already decided, if you want to talk about that decision and map it out, I think, you know, we can certainly try and start to do that, but I'm not sure we can take money numbers. I just did it, 30, 40,000 dollars, 501, 5,175 systems at 40,000 dollars is 200, almost 210 million dollars.
Right, right, but there's, it's, it's true, but it costs to hook up to the sewage system.
Are you looking to have?
We don't, but we don't know, so how can we give people information?
Yeah.
If we don't know how much it's gonna cost?
Are you looking to maybe have, like, a public session on this that's meant for the, I mean, it's been talked about by a lot of people for a lot of time, and I don't necessarily blame the public for not wanting to, like, tune in, because even the people where this is their job, it's like, oh, man, we gotta look at this, and so, it's been an ongoing conversation if people want to tune into it, but if, it sounds like you're interested in having, like, a presentation that explains our rationale to people before we, we get there, that's maybe, like, more outreach to the public?
I just want to add that back around town meeting, we did a whole series on why we're choosing wastewater, and it kind of went through all of our ongoing initiatives. It didn't have any costs associated, but it did give residents a pretty good idea of why we're moving in this direction, and it gave them all the information they need, so maybe we can just make them.
Maybe we can bring that back to another agenda.
Bring this full circle, I mean, I think that's what Jerry started off saying, is, you know, why are we doing this, and, you know, what got us to this spot, and again, it comes down to, you have a certain amount of nitrogen to remove, a TMDL requirement, and this was the way you could achieve that, and that's, you know, and Jane did have a meeting where she laid all this out, comprised of a centralized sewer system, it included the, at the seashore there, the.
So, maybe just a real pressure, like a.
I think part of the engineering process is developing a campaign of what material goes out to the public, just like we did in water, and I think, you know, if you look at what Orleans did, they had brochures made, they had all kinds of stuff, but they, they didn't do that before they knew the facts, and I think, I feel uncomfortable doing a lot before we know the facts. I think we, to Kayla's point, maybe we need to sit down with Hillary and our consultants, and just walk through sort of a timeline of maybe we put information out every two months for the next year, and then every, you know, month going into the town meeting, because we have roughly, you know, 18 months before we're gonna be voting on this, and in that time, we have to actually design a system and cost estimate it, and go through all those. And in that time, we have to actually design a system and cost estimate it and go through all those pieces. And by then, I think we'll know more about DEP and where they stand and whether we have, you know, the watershed permit to give us-
Will we potentially know whether we have NSAs in, at Northeastham and Southeastham? Whether they will, do we have any idea when DEP will?
No.
We have no clue when they'll do that.
No clue.
All right. Well.
I like the idea of a targeted, like, continual project update on wastewater.
I mean, that's what we did, remember in water, you were here in water, but we did monthly, remember we did monthly updates?
Yeah, so maybe we start doing that now.
I don't know if we wanna do it now, because the consultants have nothing to say now.
Right, right.
But once they start, that, and that's what the Capital Projects Committee is for, right? So they're gonna have to present everything to them, too. So I, I think, I understand your anxiety over it. I think it's a huge ticket item, and Rich and I are, you know, trying to figure out how to pay for it and fund it and finance it, and, but we just need more facts before we can, because I watched what happened in water, and honestly, that, some of that was great, and some of it was not very effective for us once we started implementing it, so. Orleans has had a lot of problems trying to get people to hook up, because they gave people a year to hook up, but they couldn't tell them how much the cost was or when it would be available. So again, sometimes when you start things too soon, it backfires, and so I don't wanna do that. I think we gotta find that sweet spot. And, but I think, honestly, even if you do simple calculator math, it's cheaper to do a small townwide system for just, even if it's just a few people,
Yes.
than it is to do an individual septic system.
I wanna make sure that's upfront and personal.
Yeah, okay.
Upfront and personal. That's my, that's my point. I want them to know right up front. You've gotta, to try and avoid as much, not angst, but opposition to it. Thank you.
No, I get, thank you. I understand it, and I, you know, I, it's a, it's a conundrum to know when, when to say what and how frequently to.
Does anybody else have anything on their item number four? If not, let's move on to minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the 16th of October and the 30th of October.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 16th and October 30th.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Can we vote? Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. On other business and correspondence, I've got a couple of things. I sent out a note to everybody about having a shack for light the night. And I just heard from Jamie, who can't do it.
Sorry.
So basically, since I didn't get any response, we're not gonna do it. Is everybody okay with that?
Tried to pop over for it, but I just, yeah.
We just don't have a specific shack for the select board.
Yeah, that's okay.
The other item I have is Kayla's gotten prices on the shirts that we had liked, Jamie, that you picked out.
The Rubens.
They're 115 bucks each. So the question is, she just wants, she just wants to know if we wanna go forward with it.
Now, is that, what's on there?
So, what everyone gave me, I can do. So I think Art just wanted select board. I think Jamie, I think you wanted your name.
Oh, I don't, it doesn't really matter.
Whatever we did, I did the form. We can do all the customizations for the same price. It's just, it was 115, so I didn't know if you wanted to go for that, or if maybe you wanted, like, three different shirts.
Or maybe just like a plain hoodie.
This is a sweatshirt like this, okay? Zip?
Let me see if I can find it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a special thing.
I, I, okay. I'm, I'm okay with going with the shirt, the sweatshirt, but I will defer to everybody else if they're okay with it.
I love the Rubens.
Jamie really wants to do it.
That's fine.
I'm okay offering, like, if people wanna do, like, a hoodie instead or something basic, you know what I mean? Like, to have, like, a three-tier option. You don't have to go with, like, the-
No.
You don't have to get the Tesla.
Yeah.
Advanced embroidery doesn't have a minimum, so I could just get Jamie one.
One for, one for all and all for one.
I, no, I'd like one.
Amy?
Do it all the same.
If Jamie gets one, everyone has to.
Yeah, I think everything is the same.
I think we're gonna have to spend all our money, because Jamie wants it, so we'll have to spend it.
We're taking it out of your face.
Does everybody okay if we do that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, Jerry's okay, Amy's okay. Jamie, we know it's okay. Suzanne, you're okay?
I feel like with the number of those henleys that I never wear, it's more cost-effective to get the one garment off actually.
I mean, you don't have to order one for you if you don't, if you don't want it, Suzanne.
I, yeah, I, I think I filled out a survey, and it went in my brain and out the other part of my brain, so.
I can do some on my henleys.
I don't even, I don't even know what it is.
The sizes I ordered for the other shirts just don't fit me in any way, so I-
All right, so Kayla, we're all set. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're all set. We're gonna go with those? Thank you very much, Jackie, for spending this kind of money. We really appreciate it.
It'll be taken out of your increase next year.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, like, yeah, sweatshirts can be expensive.
Read Peter Wade's thing about-
These are like jackets more than socks.
Yeah, it's more of like, yeah, they're like-
It really wasn't that expensive.
Okay, do we have any other business and correspondence?
Did you wanna, I was just gonna bring up one little thing. This is about language, and it's really not anything super impactful as far as, like, board regulation goes, but it's about, when we're talking about things that are either grandfathered or legacyed in, there is a connotation with some of the language, and I think Suzanne, maybe you could explain it better than me, with using the word grandfather versus legacy. And I know when you're aware of it, then you do become a little more uncomfortable with using grandfather versus legacy. And I don't know if it matters how we state it.
I landed on legacy at work after being like, oh, grandfather doesn't sound right, and why doesn't it? And the answer is racism. Grandfathered prevented black people from voting, and it had to do with, I think, if your grandfather was able to vote, you were able to vote, and it was a policy that was set in place to prevent, basically, black people from being able to register to vote. And so, I don't know, the legacy of that word is not super great, and-
So the idea of saying something would be a legacy property as opposed to grandfathered, I don't know if we can-
Yeah, I think I, I, yeah, I think I just-
Yeah, legally, there might be some, you know, it might be stated in some-
It's legal. We're looking at it now. It's in Lexis.
What grandfathered is legal?
See, that's the reason we use it is because it's zoning legal.
Right.
Ew, how do we change?
But that doesn't mean that it, it's like-
Yeah, exempted, excused.
Exempted, pre-approved.
Pre-approved, pre-authorized or legacyed are also acceptable terms, so.
Right. It's just something to think about, and I mean-
I think on the board we can, but I don't know if we can-
Legally and in documents and things like that.
I've been on five, five different planning boards in five different towns, and grandfathering is used consistently to mean the zoning requirement was, was not there when you did what you did. And so therefore, you're able to continue doing what you're doing. But it's pretty general, generally understood term. I never thought of it as racist, and I'm a grandfather.
Right, and I think that that's the, the, why we figured we would say something is because I think there's a lot of stuff in our language and the way that we just go about our day that we've always done, right? It's never, and we don't do it with the intent of it being a certain way. But it's just, you know, when you're aware of that something maybe has, is rooted in something different, sometimes it's just good to maybe be aware of that.
Look at marijuana.
Change it.
Marijuana, that, the name, it didn't exist until, I don't know, the 20s, maybe? And it was because of the idea that Hispanic people were bringing it, so Maria and Juan.
Is that how it came about?
Yes, I'm not kidding.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Yikes.
So I try to say cannabis whenever, yeah.
That's candy and Biff.
But no, I think that's, honestly, I never thought about it, so thank you very much, ladies. And I think we can do it as a board, and we can also-
I like, yeah, that was it. I noticed you today saying legacy more, and I was like, hmm. So, yeah, yeah.
Legacy of missions, the hyical.
Oh, yeah, that, not.
Okay, is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Second.
We'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
You have to sign some stuff.
Aye.
Okay, aye, I'm aye. So we're adjourned.